Very good, Acting Mayor. One second. Through you, Acting Mayor, we are live streaming.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members of council, we're going to call this budget committee meeting to the whole of the whole to order. First, I'm going to read our public notice. Due to the efforts to contain the spread of COVID-19 and to protect all individuals, the city facilities will not be open to the public to attend council and committee meetings until further notice. The public can observe our meetings by viewing the live stream of the open session part of these meetings, which can be accessed on the city's website, richmondhill.ca, or on the city's YouTube page linked from the city's homepage. The public may submit written correspondence regarding agenda matters by email to clerks@richmondhill.ca. Written correspondence must be submitted by 12:00 PM the day before the meeting, and the comments submitted will be provided to all members of council. They will be considered as public information and noted on the public record. Okay, so, members of council, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you, Councilor Chan. I only need a mover for this meeting. So moved by Councilor Chan that we adopt the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, any, any members have a disclosure of pecuniary interest? I don't see any. Okay, very good. We move forward to our scheduled business. The first item is 4.1, and here we have a presentation regarding our operating forecast for Q1 from our Treasurer, David Dexter. Take it away, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, and good afternoon, members of the committee. It's a small agenda today, only two reports. The first one we're coming forward with is the 2021 operating forecast, and this will be the first of four that we're going to be bringing forward. For every BCW meeting in 2021, we will be providing an updated forecast of the 21 results. I think it's important that we see where this fluid situation is going through the year because of the pandemic, and that'll provide context to each of the agendas as we go forward in the year. Next slide. Okay, so it was an overview. The 2021 operating budget, when we prepared it for January, anticipated some gradual reopenings of our facilities, and we provided a budget impact that we would have about $4.6 million in impact. Things have changed. As I mentioned, it's quite a fluid situation. A couple stay-at-home orders and lockdown orders in January and February, and of course, the one that we're currently in April going into the 20th of May. Without our facilities open, so that's leading our facilities to continue to be closed. And then, of course, there's an impact of programs not being operated, and of course, lost revenues. And of course, that impacts our budget amount. As I mentioned, this is the best information we know to date. Things change on a week-to-week basis, and again, we'll be bringing forward reports to identify the information on to date through the year. Some good news is that we received a third round of funding, safe restart funding of about almost $5.6 million. The province announced that for all municipalities in the province. And that being the third round, in total, we've received over the three announcements and provision of funding, $11.5 million. So we've been, we've been quite fortunate as other municipalities to receive this funding. Next slide, please. So this table here is one that you'll see on page three of the staff report. It really summarizes it quite well. The first column, numeric column, is how we budgeted the impacts of the pandemic to get to the $4.6 million, three quarters of the way down. And then the middle column is the additional impacts that we have. And as you can see, that the revenues from the stay-at-home orders and the further lockdowns have impacted a greater anticipated revenue loss of about $7.3 million, primarily in the recreation area. That puts us at about anticipated $19.4 million lost revenues compared to what we budgeted at 12.1. We mitigate, we mitigate some of those revenue pressures through lack of use or need for some staffing and material and supply costs, primarily in the recreation area. That mitigates it by about $6.9 million. And so the net additional impact from what we budgeted is about $414,000. So we're anticipating almost a $5.1 million deficit at this point for 2021 compared to the $4.6 million budget. The bottom of the chart really summarizes the safe restart funding, and it indicates that we have sufficient monies, approximately $10 million. If we factor in funding of the anticipated $1.5 million deficit from 2020, we'll still have about $10 million in those monies, sufficient funds to deal with the $5.1 million anticipated deficit, and as it looks right now, to help us through and look after any 2022 pressures, which I'll briefly touch on in my next presentation. Next slide, please. And this slide really just summarizes it by the major categories. After factoring the lost revenues and the savings, which is the majority of the deltas that I showed in the last slide, there's an additional impact from the lockdowns and the stay-at-home orders of about $168,000 in the recreation area. Investment income continues to be affected by a negative interest environment, low-interest environment, and that's about, we anticipate an additional $125,000 impact. We believe that parking fines will be, collectible parking fines will be about $120,000 less than we budgeted. And again, that gets us down to the $414,000 additional impact to the, to the 21 results. At this point in time, there's no changes or forecasts on water wastewater. It's too early in the year to tell on that, as the majority of water use happens in the spring, summer, and early fall season. So throughout the year, we'll have more information based on that, based on actual results. Next slide. This is a very short presentation, Mr. Acting Mayor, just for, to be received and for information purposes, and I turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, members of council, questions regarding the presentation? Anyone have any comments? Counselor Munch?
Good day. Thank you for the presentation. So initially, we're expecting a $4.6 million. Was that a surplus or a loss we had initially? I had it as a surplus, but we initially were expecting $4.6 million, and now we're going to a deficit situation. We're expecting a $5 million deficit, is that right? So did I make my mistake early on? I guess that's my question through you, the Chair.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, we budgeted $4.6 million deficit from the pandemic. During the budget process, we indicated that we would fund it from the safe restart funding, so we had a balanced budget. So this just increases that deficit to a forecast of $5.1 million. Again, we can fund that through the safe restart funds.
Okay, so the deficit is what we're expecting, and then, but that's not including the provincial funding. And we've received $11.5 million in provincial funding. So the $11.5 million we're receiving in provincial funding, that has offset all deficits we've had so far?
That's, that's correct, sir.
So are we getting, are we getting from the $11.5 million that we've received, and there's a $5 million loss? How is that balanced? Did that come in previous years? Do we, do we have any monies coming forward from previous years from that?
So the $11.5 is what we'll have received, and the 2020 deficit's appearing to be around $1.5 million. So we will, and that's directly related to COVID. So we will use some of that $11.5 for that deficit. That'll leave us $10 million going forward, and the $10 million we'll look after, as it appears right now, the 2022, 2021 situation. And if, and there will be an overhang, we anticipate in 2022, we believe we have sufficient funds for that as well in the safe restart funds.
Okay, so the, so my next question, thank you, excuse me. Sorry. So we're, we're tracking what we perceive to be the COVID net loss, and we're attaching that to how we're getting our funding from the province. So then we're going to have a surplus expectation for future COVID concerns and operating concerns, is that right?
We don't anticipate surplus in relation to the COVID concerns, right? That's, that's the lost revenues far outweigh the cost savings in any situation. So the safe restart funding will be used to offset those additional lost revenues after you take away the cost savings.
So does the province ask us how we're allocating that $11.5 million? Is it restricted in any way, shape, or form?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. We do have to do a reporting to them. Our first round of reporting on how we use these funds is in June this year. We still haven't seen the format, but they will, we will identify the impacts of COVID directly. That's what these funds were for, to help get through the pandemic, and we more than have impacts that relate to that.
And do they, in this, in this report, we go back, is there a format that everyone, including ourselves, is, or they're just asking for a general report back?
We will, we believe we will be receiving a format. I don't, I don't think we've, they've provided the format yet, but they certainly will, because they'll be reviewing every municipality in the same way.
Thank you. So is the, through you, the Chair, once again, please. The $11.5 million that we received so far, is that, is it, do we have a, are we told the methodology is what the $11.5 million has to be used for, or is that just for us to help us get through it? Is it flexible, or is it, is it, is there a certain expectation as to where it's supposed to go or not supposed to go?
From what we understand from the provinces, expectations that it has to go towards offsetting the impacts of the pandemic, be it lost revenues or additional costs or so forth.
I got it. Okay, that's good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Munch. It's good, it's a good, good question. I wondered myself what, you know, in the event, we actually have surplus restart funds or losses, what would happen in that case, Mr. Treasurer? With, if we had surplus restart funds?
If we had surplus restart funds, I'm not quite sure about that. I think they, they haven't indicated that there, there's a cutoff line, so.
I guess. Way down the road. Yeah, so I can ask you, 2022, you're making an early projection, and as limited as that is, that we would have an additional $4 million in losses? That we would use the balance of that funds, those funds?
It's about 3.5 we're anticipating right now from it. But what we're finding as the year goes along is part of the budget process.
Right. Okay, well, you know, congratulations are in order there, definitely with the way our staff has navigated through this pandemic. We have, we have obviously borne a lot of costs, but to this point, they've been offset from funds coming from the province. And, you know, we're, we're just right about on target. Would you say, Mr. Treasurer, with so far in Q1, in a very difficult time to predict and budget?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, I guess if you look at the business-as-usual elements, I think we're on track with respect to, you know, the pandemic and COVID-related costs. It happens. I mean, we don't admit that on track is not something we can align to that, but with respect to regular business, I think we're on track.
Thank you. Very good. So I need a motion to receive the presentation by the Treasurer. Vice Chair Barrows, did you want to speak, Vice Chair?
No, I think the, the presentation was very concise and explains everything.
Okay, very good. So, so moved? All in favor? Okay, any opposed? That carries? Okay, and before I introduce you for your next presentation, I really want to commend staff on, on the work that they've done in, in, like I said, dealing with the effects of the pandemic, but also dealing with a very, a very ambitious direction from council. Very ambitious. I don't, I don't think any of us on council here should, should underestimate the task that we set our, our staff towards to come back with an additional year at 0% tax increase. So we've already found a lot of savings. We had 0% increase last year, and, and now in 2022, we're going to hear from our Treasurer about what's being proposed. But we directed them to come in at zero. They've done that, and I'm sure it's taken a lot of, a lot of work. There's inflation on everything. Costs are going up, and still, they've been able to find additional savings to put this budget in front of us. And I'm very pleased to introduce David Dexter again for the second presentation of the 2022 operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. So this second report is the, is the annual capital and operating budget strategy, and it's a report that we usually bring forward in June. Our goal, and we expect to accomplish, is to complete all elements of the budget approval before Christmas, and that'll be a practice going forward. So you'll see in future years that this report coming at this timeframe on a continual basis. Next slide. So there's really three major aspects of the budget process that encumber the full year. Tariff fees update, the capital budget process, and the operating budget process, which includes water wastewater and stormwater budgets. And I got slides to describe each of those directions and strategies for 2022. Next slide, please. So first is the tariff fee process, and staff is already engaged in preparing this work. As we do our tariff and fee updates, we always, we have some core principles. We want to make sure our fees are justifiable for reasonable cost recovery, where, where we have that opportunity, comparable with neighboring municipalities, and affordable to citizens and users while still remaining competitive. I guess we have, in two broad categories, we have program fees, and we have non-programmed fees. And the program fees are primarily recreation fees. And this is where we have to do a little bit of sensitivity this year when we set and bring forward recommendations for fee changes. We have a number of fees that may have high demand for programs that the, that could bear a reasonable increase as long as it's competitive to other, our local municipalities. But then we also have to be sensitive for the programs and the fees that have, will have slower pickup and participation levels due to the, due to the pandemic. And so, and those, those fees probably we should stay flat with, right? So staff is evaluating all those type of fees right now with the program fees. And then we have non-programmed fees. This is pretty much all the other fees that the city offers. And, you know, we, again, we want to look at cost recovery and competitiveness with neighboring municipalities, and we definitely will be considering providing a CPI indexing of the, as I've indicated in this slide, it's forecasted for at 1.9% for the province in '22. So we're going to make sure we, we align that so we can get the most cost recovery as possible. That report will be bringing forward in June this year to be scheduled late that month. Next slide. Next stage of the, of the overall budget process, the capital. And capital is our, is usually our, is our second largest budget amount for the year, right? Where it's in excess usually of $40 million to $40 to $60 million, depending on the year and the items brought forward. We want to continue to implement the recommendations and outcomes from the Capital Sustainability Steering Committee meetings. Those meetings were, we had about six of them, I believe, where they went through 2019 and the early parts of 2020. We have an asset management plan that's, that's on track to be completed in advance of the regulation deadlines. And I believe our report's coming forward with that in, in June. And that, that asset management plan includes all our core assets, which is the heart and soul of our total asset base, as well as the majority of non-core assets. So that's good news that we have that information to help us with our budget process. But there's still a number of items and plans that are still in progress that really will inform our capital budget and forecasting exercises, such things as the, the official plan and the results of the official plan relate. We'll, we'll provide some interpretation of the transportation master plan, parks and rec plan. So we're not at this point here to provide a full wholesome budget of all the needs as well as a forecast. So at this point, we're recommending one more year of a capped tax-supported capital program at $16 million till we get through that and are able to apply the principles that council approved in our financial sustainability strategy. And to keep, to achieve the cap program for the tax support at $16 million, we will continue with the risk assessment process to ensure we have the right prioritization of the projects that we want to bring forward in 2022. We will continue to monitor and update shovel-ready projects for when grant opportunities come. We want to take full opportunity to those, and the best way to do is to plan a little bit for that through our capital budget process. We've been doing that for about three years now through the capital budget process, and we'll continue to do that. We're also going to bring forward a, a capital forecast, which is really going to be the 2022 budget plus four years of forecast. We'll bring that forward in October when we report out. And as I mentioned, we're in October reporting out to BCW. Next slide. So the, these are the recommendations that are in the report to continue to manage the capital program with the corporate priorities in mind. Take advantage of all external funding sources, be it development charges or reserves. Again, I mentioned the, make sure we are in line with the capital sustainability recommendations, capping the tax-supported program at $16 million, and leveraging the information in our, in our enterprise asset management or the asset management plan that we have and are going to be bringing forward in place. Next slide. The final, the final stage of the overall budget process is the operating budget. And that's always, always has a lot of focus, be it at this committee or, and with staff efforts through the year. Right now, we're looking at a forecast of about almost a $2 million worth of impacts that we don't have funding for, and that would relate to a 1.63% tax rate equivalent, and that's purely for regular business. Now, if you layer on the COVID impacts, as I mentioned in a previous presentation, early estimates are about $3.5 million. But I guess on a financial side, we believe we're, we're in good shape because we have, we'll still have safe restart funding there. So that shouldn't be the biggest concern when it comes to the budget. We're estimating assessment growth in 2022 at about 1.5%, and we'll see how that goes. You know, that impact can get into facilities and get that information to us so we can get that assessment in line. Impact has postponed the reassessment for the second year, and that means the average assessed home in Richmond Hill is still at $1,148,000. We haven't heard when the next reassessment comes into place. It's still to be announced, so I wouldn't expect to see that till sometime in 2022. But I'm not, unless they come up with it, a quick announcement on it. We are going to continue increasing the capital asset sustainability fee that's played out on the tax bill. We're increasing it by 1%, and that's an important element for us to continue to fund the tax-supported capital needs of the organization and meet the principles of our financial sustainability strategy. There's a number of other pressures in the budget, and though a few of them have identified here, you got the labor agreements and staffing cost increases. We have a lower short-term investment returns, and that impacts our revenues. This will be in 2022, it'd be the third year of phased reduction of investment income, and that reduction would be by $850,000 to align that income line in the budget to about $3.4 million. This would hopefully align us with how our short-term returns are occurring. And this 2022 will be the third year of the phasing in of the Public Works Enhancement Program. That's primarily the windrow removal program, and that'll have a $500,000 impact. Next slide, please. For meetings we staff have had with you, Mr. Acting Mayor, and, and the Deputy, Deputy Chair of the Budget Committee, we've been directed to come forward with a 0% tax rate increase. And that will be, you know, it'll be a big challenge for staff. As I've indicated, our outlook indicates about, you know, 1.63 tax rate equivalent of pressures. We'll continue with the continuous improvement reviews to try to find efficiencies to get those numbers down. So we will report out on that to committee in November, and that's when we're bringing the operating budget forward. Next slide, please. So these are the recommendations in the staff report. Standard one to support council priorities, I mentioned the no more than 0% tax rate increase, and of course, concerning the guidelines and the timelines in the staff report there for preparing the operating budget. Next slide. At the same time, we bring the operating budget forward, we bring the water wastewater and stormwater management budgets forward. Those are rate-supported budgets. When it comes to the water wastewater, we're really impacted by what the region of York does. That's about 70, over 70% of the costs, costs in that budget, so our hands are tied. They haven't determined what their wholesale rate increase is going to be for 2022. I understand there's a June report coming with a, a short and medium-term financial plan for rate increases that they're going to bring, and I guess we'll be informed by that report when it comes forward to regional council in June. Our rates that will come forward will recommend will be impacted by that. The return to stormwater management. As part of the 2020 operating budget process, council approved a new, more equitable rate structure based on land area. And we are to have that implemented by April 2022, and we're still going to get that in place for April 2022. And this, this rate structure, as I mentioned, is more equitable, and it will provide greater long-term financial sustainability of that program and the significant assets that it supports. It should be, now, this is, this would be a significant change to what residents see. In particular, condo dwellers will receive bills for the first time for stormwater management, and industrial and commercial properties in the city will see significant increases to their bills because, as I mentioned, this is based on land area, and land area is a more driving factor of the impact on the stormwater management fee. Currently, our fee structure is, is a flat rate structure where we charge residents about $74, and we charge businesses and condo units $215. So they're used to that flat rate structure. We're moving to a more equitable one, as I mentioned there. Throughout the year, about six months in advance, we'll have a large amount of communication to all through the water bill, the website, social media, news releases, and so forth. So there will be, there'll be a large awareness and education of the change and why the change. And this report, along with the operating budget report, will be coming to the November of BCW. Next slide, please. And the recommendation in the report is that, as I mentioned, the water rate come forward and reflect the regional increases, and the stormwater and water rate will be consistent with the water wastewater financial plans and the stormwater financial plans that this council approved in 2017. And, Mr. Acting Mayor, that's the end of this presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Thanks for that. We know we've got a, we've got a way forward and a plan to deal with it. You know, just a cursory look now at what, what's coming in the year ahead. So any, any questions on what's presented? Counselor Munch?
Good day. Thank you, once again, Mr. Dexter. A question for you. When we go through the CPI numbers, the 1.9%, now, we are, we are basing ourselves to that number. What's the point of bringing that CPI number forward, is my, my question?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, the CPI number we use as a part of our tariff fee update, right? Where we, we want to increase fees, at least the non-programmed fees, by at least that 1.9% because the majority of our non-programmed fees are attempting to be cost recovery. So we're incurring these cost impacts. We're using CPI as a general number right now. And so we want to, you know, ensure we get closer to cost recovery or have cost recovery by increasing those non-programmed fees by those amounts.
So if we're, thank you. So the, the 1.9%, because I look back on my notes on how I'm tracking CPI as well, and when it comes into the reports and the actual versus the forecast. So when we're doing the, can we, if we're going to be using that 1.9% as our benchmark for how we're going forwards, is that our growth rate of what we're trying to do as an organization or as per our labor? Or how exactly, or is it just programs? how exactly, or is it just programs?
Yep, to you, Acting Mayor. So, you know, there's a number of different inflation factors depending on the commodity. And of course, you know, municipalities sometimes have the more expensive commodities that they deal with on a regular basis. It'd be difficult to, you know, to start segregating those and when you start setting fees. Number of elements that go into it, like staffing costs and then maybe a different factor depending on labor agreements. Or what type of materials are supplied. So we use as a general guideline just the CPI, at least so we can get some element of cost recovery and increase costs that we feel. So it's not directly aligned with the exact costs that we have, but we need with the number of fees that we have, especially, you know, in our tariff of fee, it's in excess of two thousand. General factors to
Okay, fair enough. Have, do we do anything in regards to growth? So as we go into, we've been growing at a declining rate. So when you look at our growth at a declining rate, when do we start saturating our costs with regards to capital and how we're bringing that money in and how we're doing the replacement costs? And right now, we've got some funding, extra funding coming in from the province. You know, that, that, you know, now I'm asking that going forward though, if we didn't have that COVID money and we're growing at a declining rate and we're looking at these forecast numbers, how, what are we, what is our plan? Do we have, we have a capital sustainability fund to get that. But what is our plan going forward for our, right now, we're doing a twenty-year plan. How are we balancing or intending to balance that? Are we putting anything away? Are we, are we planning to put anything away? Question.
Mr. Acting Mayor, we do maintain our tax, a number of reserve, reserve funds. And so we do have tax-supported capital reserve funds, which are our most pressured ones. And we do have a capital fee that we charge as I pointed out in the slide that we take in funds. So we anticipate from that capital fee that we'll bring in about sixteen million dollars. So that was the basis for capping this year's capital point sixteen million until we learn more about all our needs from the various plans that are in progress. Our financial sustainability strategy, and I'm hoping I mentioned your question here. Part of that, the principle of that strategy is to maintain these tax-supported capital reserve funds at at least forty million dollars. So, and then along that, other principles of that strategy is to consider debt as part of the, to finance larger projects that require, that should be applied as intergenerational funding. And to use the interest from that reserve fund base at forty million to help service the debt costs. So we, one of your questions was, are we putting money away? Yes, we're trying, we're trying to protect balances. Thus we can. So when the monies come in, we're trying to, trying to protect at least a forty million dollars in those reserve balances to help sustain us into the future. I, I hope I answered your question. Did I, did I fully?
So the, the, thank you. So the, that's exactly right. Are we going to have a workshop or have a discussion? So where did this forty million dollar base come from? Because when I look at the operating budget, for example, and I look at our capital budget, our capital budget and our operating budget is growing. And if we keep that forty million dollars the base, we actually having a reduction in our balance or capacity. And as we are not going to be able to grow, and we have not been able to meet our growth targets for, for many, many years. So that the problem I have there is that if we're focusing our operating on growth or we're not achieving that growth and we're having challenges in our budgetary and now we're talking about taking on debt and we're becoming a, a declining or a flat organization over time and we're going through our twenty, thirty-year plan. When are we going to start looking at that forty million dollar budget? And if we're putting money towards that reserve fund, you know, is that forty million dollars, you know, is that really going to be the number? If that fund is only to service our debt, do we ever, ever have a thought process of returning our debt or is that just going to be a debt in perpetuity?
To Treasurer?
There is, Acting Mayor. So I guess back in October last year, we brought forward the financial sustainability strategy and it had those principles I described. And it indicated that we, we need to pass on capital levy increases at about one point five percent per year. And that'll help sustain the reserve. Keep the reserve at the balance we need so that the interest from that could be used to fund, if we use debt to or long-term larger projects that are in, that should be funded intergenerationally. And then so minimize the impact that would come to the taxpayers from having debt. So that was this financial sustainability strategy. It hasn't been fully implemented yet because we're still not at a point of knowing our full extent of our asset and our asset needs. As I mentioned, there's a number of plans still in progress. The asset management plan is almost done and still is coming forward to report, but then there's the the other plans that are going on, like transportation master plan, the parks rec plan, and then we need to be informed, the strategy needs to be informed by that. We update it and then we present it to council again for discussion. Now, in October, when I presented that plan, based on the known information then, the strategy of maintaining the reserve balance, using debt for large projects, everything I've since mentioned in principles. We saw that come on at, at a, at a reasonable level over the first five and six years, but then it started subsiding and we started seeing a bit, a bit of an end to it and decline in that. Now it's based on the information at that time. And we realized at that time, we didn't have all the information on the assets at this point till all these plans are updated. So our goal was to land in a spot where we could see the end of debt in some sort of site. And I guess when we go about updating it, when after these plans are done, the sustainability strategy, then we'll look for the same type of reasonless there. We just cannot let that grow in perpetuity. We need to see an end of it in sight.
So when, when is that, are we going to have a consolidation of these reports at some point? Where the plans come together, they're bringing the capital, is that, when is that going to be brought to council or, or how is that going to be? How is that process unfolding?
So until these plans are completed, yeah, we'll take all that information from those plans and then we will come back to council, probably through this committee. And indicate an updated capital forecast based on all that current information. And then put together the financial strategy principles, see how that looks, do some modeling there, present the modeling, probably some options for, for committee to review and consider that could, that should eventually lead to recommendations.
So I don't, so we're doing, we're doing, just to summarize, we're doing a bunch of, we're doing several plans. As those plans come forward with their processes and budget requests, they then put in, being brought, and then we put that into a model of capital and then that capital total comes back to council. And then we at that point give how we're going to fund that model to those plans that brought in. Is that basically a nice summary?
That's, that's pretty much it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Munch. Vice Chair Barrows.
Thank you. I, I just thought I would maybe just build upon some of Counselor Munch's comments. And perhaps in some cases, simplify some of the, the comments that were made. When we're looking at debt as an organization, we're looking at debt from a responsible perspective to pay for capital expenditures over a longer period of time. We're not looking for debt because we don't have money. We are one of the few municipalities in this country that can claim a debt-free status and have very healthy reserves. There are many municipalities in this country that are currently in a situation where their only option, their only option to do capital works is to borrow money. Previous councils in Richmond Hill have made very good decisions. This council continues on that path to be very prudent in, in how we purchase things, when we purchase things, the evaluation of current assets. So that we can, we can maintain that, that great position. So enough said on that, the bottom line is we are in an enviable position which gives us lots, lots of options when it comes time to look at how we fund the different opportunities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Barrows. Well said. So the, want to thank Treasurer, Mr. Dexter for that presentation and all the people that, that have gone behind the work that, that's being done. And you know, the, the projected twenty twenty two budget. I, I, I just, just had a couple of questions. I just want to clarify. So our three-year so in, in twenty twenty three, the budget, we are not going to have to but budget an amount to account for the declining investment revenue. We're, we're, we're done with that third year of a three-year plan. So in twenty twenty three, there'll be eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars, is it?
This, going forward with the eight hundred fifty thousand reduction in twenty two would be the last of the years to do that.
Okay, so that, so and then in the, the the, the summer and winter maintenance program that, that was, took three years at five hundred thousand a year to pay. That twenty twenty two would also be the final year of that.
To you, Mr. Acting Mayor, that's the third year of an eight-year program.
Oh, that, that's eight years, okay. So it's, you know, it's just the investment income. That we, that we won't have that pressure anymore. So that, that's something, you know, if, if we go ahead with this twenty twenty two proposed budget, you know, and we, we finish, we finish off that year, that's a, it's a huge adjustment because we saw the need three years ago when we started this term. We were budgeting to earn four and a half percent, four, four and a half percent on our money. We had been able to do that at some time some time ago, but now I imagine, I know our, our portfolio is performing very well. But one, one and a half percent is all you can expect as a return. So we've adjusted and, and for that as well. So that, that's significant. Too bad we didn't adopt the the receipt of Bitcoin two years ago, that would have, would have helped with their, with our situation if we had some of that on hand. But anyways, I need a motion to receive this second report by the Treasurer. Thank you, Councilman Munch. Okay, I'm assuming there's no further discussion. Call the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously and I just need a, a motion to adjourn. Councilman Munch, all in favor? Any opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Dexter.